Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November 19th, 2019 City Council meeting. If you could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the power of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Olivera.
Here.
Councilmember Herman.
Here.
Councilmember McIlroy.
Here.
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda. Is there any council member or staff that wishes to amend the agenda? Any comment from the public on the agenda? Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Next is public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. State law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed. Is there any public comment?
Hello, council members again. I thought I was going to be put on the agenda for tonight because that's what I requested the last time I was here. And then I was told I'm not on the agenda because everyone decided not to put us on the agenda. But I'm Charlotte Wheeler. We own two properties, the hotel apartments in Angels Camp. So my son is on the phone right now and he would like to address the council about what's been going on.
Okay, Roland. Can we do that?
Okay. Hello, City Council, can everyone hear me okay?
Hold on, wait, 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 wait.
We can't who addresses the council has to have given access to other people to hear the proceeding and it has to be posted 72 hours in advance.
Melissa knows about this and she said it would be all right.
So I was just made aware if it's, if it is a violation, I would defer to the deputy clerk on that.
I can't guarantee that and we don't have legal counsel here to have.
It sounds kind of funny that my son can't speak to the council members.
I was just told I could by Melissa and the team. They just sidebared for five people sidebared with us and told me I could.
Did you hear that? Five people sidebared with him and said he could.
The concern I have is what the public can hear. Because if the public can't hear what is on the...
On the phone.
On the phone, how are they gonna try?
Well, the public will be able to hear because it's on speaker.
Put it to the microphone.
Can you hear that?
I think, you know what, actually, I think from my perspective, I would recommend allowing it. I mean, we allow letters to be presented and read orally. So I think at this point, it's public comment. It's not that he's participating in the meeting via conference call. So at that point, we allow letters to be read in by others. So how would this technology be different than reading in a letter?
As long as...
And we will check the legal counsel and course correct should we be inaccurate in that decision.
We'll try it out.
Let's go for it.
Okay, Roland, they said you can do it.
Fantastic. Thank you, City Council. And can you hear me okay?
Yes.
They said yes.
Okay. First of all, thank you for your time this evening. I know your time is short. I'll be brief. This is in regard to the piece of property we own at 1287 South Main Street at the corner of Bird's Way and Highway 49, known as the Historic Angels Camp Hotel. We've owned this building since the early 2000s and my partners, which are my parents, Roland and Charlotte, we take great pride in preserving the heritage of the historic downtown sector and everything about Angels Camp. My wife and I grew up, we went to Bret Hart, we're graduates. We love Angels Camp, but there's an issue here regarding the water bill. And I'll take you back to, to January 2018 where we, where the building is using approximately 20 cons a month of water. That's 20, that's 100 cubic feet, 710 cubic feet per con. And it's well under that of an average house and a family of four. And it goes as high as 80 cons in a month. So the occupancy rate at the Historic Angels Camp Hotel building fluctuates. Now, our, our bill, which was, we were reclassified back in, I think, 2006, 2007 with the seat of angels. They, they said, this is what you are, this is how you're going to be billed. And our, and our water bill runs roughly $151 a month. And it's with a flat 5/8 inch, 5/8 inch line, which is $39.75 and a flat sewer hookup of $90.95. We'll jump to August of this year. Our water 5/8 inch meter flat fee dropped to $34.50 and the sewer charge flat fee went up by $8 to $98.61. And then out of nowhere comes an additional residential sewer flat fee of $936.12. So our total bill goes from roughly $150 to $180 a month to $1,200 a month. And we, we're told that it depends on the number of faucets that can turn on in the building. That's how we're charging you. And we're confused by it. It doesn't make sense that, that our sewer fee can be raised by 11 times. And we want to bring it to the city council's attention to review and look at it. We're in the process to where it's such a, such a large hike that we're going to have to seek representation to find out what's going on. It does not make sense. We believe that, you know, we're to share in part with the water increases that the city may need to do, but we don't want to carry the entire burden on our back. So this is very frustrating and I appreciate anything you guys can do. I will, I will fly up there to meet with whomever I need to talk with and to resolve this in a, in a, in a quick manner. So I appreciate your time. And if you want to ask me any questions right now, I'm, I'm more than happy to answer any of them. And again, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Is there any question?
Not at the moment.
No, not at the moment.
Nope, no thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you though.
But they said thank you.
Okay, thanks everyone.
So for the record, our deputy clerk will follow up with legal counsel and we report back to council as to whether or not we need to correct this decision in the future moving forward. So just to let you know, we will verify the situation, but I, I think it was best that we just provide the opportunity for public comment.
Oh, and by the way, is that Melissa speaking?
That's Melissa.
Melissa, there's a problem with Bird's Way with sinkholes that the city has come out to fix over the last few years, but three years ago, we came to you guys noting that there's, and we videotaped and showed you guys, but nothing has been done with the sinkholes on Bird's Way. And that needs to be addressed as well.
Thank you. Okay.
Can we get on the docket for Bird?
So we will work with you, with our engineering and our finance team. We'll schedule a meeting and we'll go over the assumptions, the information that we've prepared. So we know what we would be discussing if the item did come before the council. Because right now, we're just formulating those assumptions and those topics for discussion. So we'd like an opportunity to present those to you first.
All right. And he has been discussing this with you from the very onset.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Just thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Good night.
Night. Is there any other public comment? Not related to anything on the agenda? Oh, okay. Next is item 4A, report out of closed session. Earlier tonight, the council went into closed session to, related to public works foreman and public work director, plant chief operator and plant operator number three. And that will be addressed at the next, on the agenda. Agenda item?
H.
H. So no reportable action. Next is consent agenda. There are four items on the consent agenda. Is there any council member that wishes to pull the consent agenda, consent agenda item?
We want to pull B.
B. Any others?
Yep.
Is any public comment on consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion to approve A, B, A, C, and D?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, B, just a question of policy and process on the reimbursements. Do we have a policy about entertaining outside companies over a meal? And I understand the blackout and all of that was appropriate. I'm not challenging that. But I just want to know, do we have a policy that says whether we do that or not, you know, in the city?
There has been in the past where city administrator or council members have turned in receipts and they go through the finance director and the city administrator, but I don't, I'm not...
So I think what I'm asked, what we are asking for here is the development of that policy for the reimbursement of expenses incurred by the city administrator. So there's kind of been a number of times where I would typically just pay for this out of my pocket, but those are becoming excessive, especially in this circumstance. The cost became too much personally. And then I think what we're asking for is the city administrator to be given a city credit card. And then those policies to be developed by staff with the city council being the approving authority on all of my expenses. And so then if it's determined to be an ineligible expense, then it would be compensated. I would have to pay the bill out of my pocket personally. But I think that would be part of our direction that we're seeking is to develop that policy. I would like to put those charges on a city credit card rather than my personal credit card. And then you guys would have the opportunity to review and vet all of those charges on a monthly basis and the bill wouldn't be paid without your approval. So we're asking for the development of that policy.
That was my only question. Is, is there a policy? And if there isn't?
Not that I'm aware of, other than the fact that I do not have the use of the city credit card. And that became a challenge during this PSPS. There's only one person in City Hall that has that. And so in an emergency situation, or should that employee be unavailable, then that's quite an expense that could potentially be incurred on one individual and their personal finances. I think also too, that this helps kind of reduce and eliminate the potential for fraud and risk because at this point, right now, we're sharing that credit card, you know, for expenses. Then it all goes on to that person's log, which then I ultimately approve. So I think that this simplifies that process whereby all of my charges have an ultimate signing authority.
Let's set it up so that there is no such thing as self-approval.
Absolutely.
So whatever your, whatever your expense is, it goes to the next higher level. And if that's your subordinates, you can approve. And if it's you, it comes to council. That's, I was just looking for a policy there.
Absolutely.
No problem with what was done and all of that.
Right, yeah.
And the policy should also include how that kind of thing is structured. For example, rather than you went to lunch with, you know, the power company or the water company or whatever, and it's completely, it's a business lunch, it's appropriate, it should include names, not just a company. So a policy that gets that kind of detail, I think, is what I need. And then in, in this package, at least one of the documents was not legible. So this is, this is, this is post-approval blessing for us and I'm okay with that, but you know, that, this one was a little complicated. So it, you know, everything that comes to us for approval should be legible. And then finally, on the lighter side, it's okay to give a gratuity.
Yeah. So that is, that's off the show. It might have left cash.
I can be part of the bill, you know.
That was left as cash, so I didn't, didn't include that. But just for the record, we, the lunch was with the county administrative officer, the county OES director, the PG&E liaison. It was during PSPS and so it was during the coordination of one of our community meetings. And so I think a good opportunity, especially since we had 700 people staying at our, or visiting our PG&E resiliency center. And so, yeah.
Yeah. And the other thing is, I think, the personal accountability on the credit card is the way to go, not shared.
Yes.
So yeah, legitimate need for the credit card in the field with the public works foreman or with Susan or you, then it's your credit card, you're accountable for it.
Absolutely.
With the next level approval for all.
We don't have that secondary approval because right now, my travel policies could go on one credit card that belongs to someone else, but ultimately, I'm the signing authority on that credit card. Right. So I think issuing the city administrator a credit card and requiring a process to go through you is going to be a better solution and more accountable.
Okay.
Um, as we go through this, can we add in PSPS emergency purchases for food for staff to, and set up a policy with that so there's no more question?
Perfect. So staff will work on that policy with that direction. We'll take that as an action item and then we will bring it back.
Any other council questions or comment?
No.
Any public comment? Is there a motion to approve consent agenda item B?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. Next is regular agenda and we have four public hearings, so bear with me.
So we did seek direction as to whether or not we could consolidate the public hearings and we cannot consolidate, so we do need to move through each item as it's agendaized.
Ready to go.
First public hearing is on the rezoning, adopting ordinance 491 for a rezon of 1180 Bus Street from a single-family residential to historic commercial. Amy.
Madam Mayor, council members, we are recommending approval of what is now simply a rezoning to historical commercial. There has been no opposition. This is the second reading and we do recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there any council questions or staff comments before I open the public hearing?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Public hearing, open. Nope. Okay, public hearing, close. Is there a motion, do we need a motion? Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, yes.
There is a motion on the table to approve 1180 Bus Street from single-family residential to historic commercial. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do you get that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. Next public hearing. Waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance 492 amending the Angels Code to address small residential freestanding, i.e. non-roofed top solar energy system within the city.
Mayor and council members, we do have one proposed change and you will have some public input on this during your public hearing. It was brought to our attention that freestanding solar requires additional kilowatts, that 10 will not do it, that you need at least 20. And so we are asking that in the definition for freestanding solar, that you increase the kilowatt amount from 10 to 20. There will also be some comments related to screening and the criteria for that and the flexibility allowed in that. At this point, staff is recommending that you maintain the wording that is currently there. If we run into any problems, we will come back to you for some finessing of this ordinance. But we do recommend that you continue including the screening requirement in the ordinance and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any council questions? Staff comment? Okay. Public hearing, open.
I don't really raise the issue of the size of the kilowatt rating of installation. My name's Scott Rich, I moved into Angels Camp about two months ago, maybe two months ago. And just by way of clarification, there's no specific requirement for a ground-based solar installation to be above or below a certain size. The point I was trying to make is that the existing ordinance, as it's supposed to be adopted now, indicates a 10 KW maximum. And, and it doesn't make sense to have a maximum for a ground-based system that's identical to the maximum for a roof-based system, which is a function of how much real estate you actually have on a roof. A 10 KW system is about 33 or 34 panels of roughly 5 by 3 foot per panel. So there's a maximum size you can actually fit on the average 2,000 square foot house. Whereas if we're dealing with a ground-based system, your, your policy regulation already stipulates that you have to have at least 10 acres of land. In my case, I have almost 5. But I don't want to be limited to 10 KW. Actually, mine's only going to be about 1 KW or above that, but it just doesn't make sense to have that. So in order to, you know, make things a little bit easier for everybody, I propose to Amy that, that you just arbitrarily say, well, 20 KW. I'm not sure, it's up to you guys as to what, if you actually want to limit the physical size of a ground-based system that's within the city limits. Seems like you might want to, but I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what that size should be. It just should be bigger than 10 KW because the whole point of having 5 acres of land is so you can use it for something. And that's what I'm proposing to you. And I only have a little concern about the, the issue of shielding it from, from public view hypothetically. I don't know if that's going to be a problem for me. I don't, I don't personally think anybody can see my installation from a public road with the possible exception of Highway 4, the Highway 4 bypass, but that would be really hard to even, I have trouble finding my house when I drive that bypass, so I doubt that that would be an issue for me. So I, I, I'm not going to raise an issue about how you establish that. I think that'll be probably fine to allow the discretion of whoever your, your building apartment person is. So I'm just proposing that we, they do increase the size to 20 KW. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Nope. Okay, public hearing, close. And then, did council members have any?
I have one more question for Amy. So bringing up the 10 to 20 KW, like what happens if Brenner High School wants to cover that parking lot in freestanding solar panels over there and produce enough power to do what they need to over there? This is way more than 20 KW. Can we change it? Can we do base by, you know, case by case?
The ordinance is for residential.
Residential only at that point, but does that mean?
It is residential only and you have to be zoned R1, R2, R3. There is, there are conditional use permit requirements. Let me double check for public really quickly here and see what that one was, because I don't know off the top of my head. We do not address public.
Okay.
Along those same lines about, with respect to the screening?
Yes.
It's related to public view only? What about the neighbors?
Public, we did not require anything for neighbors.
Is there, is there a permit process required?
There is only a building permit required if you're an acre or larger. There's a conditional use permit under an acre and on commercial and stuff that's visible, highly visible from the highway, which is all our commercial and shopping center.
So does that permit process provide for public or neighbor access, neighbor comments about it?
It does not.
It does not.
Not unless you trigger a conditional use permit on lots of smaller than an acre on residential, then it does. So your smaller subdivisions, yes, you would require input from neighbors. It's when you have one acre and more that you would not require that. The idea being, if you have an acre or more, you should have sufficient area to screen from your neighbors or locate it so that you don't offend your neighbors.
But the way it's written, there's no requirement to screen it from your neighbors, only from public view?
Correct. But during the use permit process, under an acre, you certainly can and it is required finding of the use permit that it be consistent with the community in which it's set. So yes, you could then require it.
When you talk about an acre, are you talking about the parcel?
Yes.
Or are you talking about this, talking about the panels covering the ground?
The parcel size, the total parcel, gross parcel acreage.
Okay.
Any other council question, comment?
Nope.
Okay. And with that, is there a motion to approve? I'm going to approve ordinance 492 with the amendment, I believe it is of 20 kilowatts.
10 to 20. Yeah, 10 to 20 kilowatts.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. Item T, public hearing. Waive the second reading and adopt ordinance 493 amending and eliminating the requirement for conditional use permit approved by the planning commission and allow sales serving alcohol and replacing them with administrative conditional use permit approval by the city planner with appeal to the planning commission. Amy.
Mayor and council members, this is simply the second reading of the ordinance introduced at our last meeting. It is to streamline the process, especially for restaurants that want to start serving alcohol or things such as Vino Matat, where they went from doing some wine tasting to now having a restaurant so that you would not have to wait the additional four to six weeks until a public hearing came up in order to get your ABC license issued. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any question?
Well...
It's okay, Joe, go for it.
So the, the city makes a declaration with respect to ABC, right? And there's no, there's no, there's no upper limit to the number of licenses that can come into the city?
There is in fact a limit and we have exceeded it, as have most communities in this area. And in fact, we have to find a condition of public convenience and necessity.
Which we do every time somebody needs a license, right?
Which we do every single time. We have never not done that. And this does include a provision for, we're not just going to do it, we are still going to have an administrative use permit process. So neighbors within 300 feet will still be notified, but then the planning director, if there is no opposition, can simply issue the permit.
So the public input is, is it through the planning commission for final approval?
That stays. And then it's simply, if you get all of approvals from the neighbors, it doesn't go to the planning commission. If everybody's in favor, the planning director can simply issue it and you do not have to wait the additional time. If there is opposition, you take it to the planning commission.
Okay. But there's opposite, there's plenty of room there for the neighbors to know about it.
Yes. It is still required to do notifications within 300 feet.
Okay.
Any other questions before I open? Open public hearing? Any comment? Close public hearing? Is there a motion to approve the conditional use permit approval process?
I will make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh. And last one. Public hearing to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance 494 related to the historic commercial development and parking in the historic commercial zoning district to reduce parking requirements for changes in use or for projects. Amy.
Mayor and council members, again, this was to, in response to some problems we were having at the planning commission where we were informing people who had existing buildings in the historic district that they would have to pay in lieu fees for three to six parking spaces, that they could not accommodate, for example, a change of use. That basically encourages them to go somewhere, demolish another historic structure or something on their parcel to make room for additional parking. We reviewed various ordinances throughout the country and in the state, and most people do not require additional parking in historic district unless you expand the footprint. And that is what this ordinance does. If you expand the footprint, you will have additional parking requirements which you can still accommodate on or off-site. And we have in fact already used... And we have in fact already used this once under a flexibility provision in the code which allowed us to do a use permit for the Utica Hotel. And I think it, the commission was quite happy with the way that particular item worked out. Be happy to answer any questions.
Expanding the footprint, does that mean adding onto the building, or does that mean reorganizing the building to take greater occupancy? Or does it mean all of those things?
It means you only add, there are different categories. If you change the occupancy from commercial to commercial, or even certain low elements of residential to commercial, you do not have to add additional parking. It's only if you change the square footage of the building and make it larger that you end up having to add additional parking. There are a couple exceptions to that. If you do such a major change that it requires more than six additional parking spaces, you can be required to do additional parking if you're changing the occupancy excessively.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from council?
No.
Public hearing open? Any comment? Yeah? Okay, public hearing closed. Is there a motion to approve the proposal for the parking in the historic zoning district? So move.
I'll second.
All on favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Item E, approval of task order number one for item Aspie in the amount of 25,000 for the completion of income survey for the community development block grant. Melissa.
Project staff recommends approval of this item in order to continue moving forward with the consideration of a citywide application for the community development block grant program. The justification for this expense is the changes in the census data as published by HUD from a previous period of 2006 to 2010, where the low moderate income percentage for the city was 58.84, which meant the minimum requirement of 51%. It allowed us to apply for and compete for those CDVG funds. The current census data has our low to moderate income percentage dropping to 43.94. We need to work with HUD to get an approved methodology on the survey, complete the survey as required by their guidelines and criteria, and try the best we can to verify the income levels within our community so that we can compete for these funds. One of the projects that we've identified and outlined for use of these funds is a potential citywide fire department and fire station. And we want to continue to record with every best effort that we might be able to consider that as a project for the application. There will still be additional efforts in terms of public hearings and the prioritization of projects citywide, but we want to make sure that we can compete for a citywide project. So I recommend that we approve this and begin work right away on the income study. We've got a short timeline because we need to beat the NOFA release by January 2020. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
How do you like the odds for me being successful at this?
The, you know, we have the funds from CDVG that can be utilized for this. The consultant is confident that we can increase the percentage, but it could take some additional work. That additional work is worked into the scope, it's a not-to-exceed amount. So if we are successful with mailers, then we'll have a savings, but if not, it'll be the $25,000 not-to-exceed amount.
So you're trying to get HUD to go along with a raise in the percentage back closer to 58 or whatever it used to be?
Fifty-one. Yeah, we need to hit 51.
Fifty-one. And?
Forty-three point nine.
This is just some kind of a calculation based on the population census that drives this number?
Mm-hmm.
And nothing changed in the population, how do we, why do we think we can get it changed?
Well, we think that potentially that maybe the change in population that's discussed around the table was the addition maybe of the NOVA subdivision. That's the only new subdivision we've had since that period of time. But we just want to make sure that we leave no stone unturned, and if we have to, go door to door to gather this information, to do our best to compete for those funds. And I think it would be a loss to not be able to compete for those funds citywide.
And we'll be able to get this done by January 2020?
If I let her know tonight, she has committed that. She's identified her schedule. It's unfortunate because we'll be doing mailers around Christmas, you know, and the second mailer on the 20th. But I think that that needs to be part of our early outreach as well as a community, is making sure that the community knows the importance of returning this survey information and what it means for us in terms of funding and citywide infrastructure.
Can we do it in safety yellow?
Well, I, I think we have to get the, every step we take has to be approved by HUD. So we can, I can make that suggestion so that it's noticeable and stands out.
Question, does the county do the census study?
I'm not sure the county's efforts or application in CDVG. We compete independently.
Independently, so that, okay. I didn't know if they'd done the study six months ago or something, and we wouldn't have to spend this money.
That I'm not aware of. I don't think that they, it would be targeted in specific to the city.
To the city only, okay.
Is there time, like there weren't enough responses by mail to go door to door if necessary?
Yes.
Or see, focus certain areas?
Yes. So she has door to door if necessary, January 29th through 31st.
Okay.
Well, this should be good to help match some of the funding grant opportunities we've missed out on because of the 50%.
So I do have a correction on the task order. I accidentally left citywide striping project from a previous task order, so I will correct that on the signed final copies.
Any further council questions, comments? Any public comments? Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve task order number one for item Aspie in the amount of 25,000?
So move.
I'll second.
All on favor?
Aye.
Five oh.
Next is approval of amendment number one to the agreement for professional consulting services with Blackwater Consulting Engineers for the design and facility improvement at the city water treatment plant. Melissa.
Perfect. I would like to turn this item over to Dave Richards, who's the city engineer on the water and wastewater services, and he will present the item.
New York City Council, the engineering agreement for professional consulting services with Blackwater Consulting Engineers, which was originally initiated in 2017. Work was completed up to a point in, up until January of 2019, pending resolution or ultimate going forward with the capital improvement program. That was init, or was then adopted by the city council in August of this year. Blackwater Engineering was on, essentially was on hold during that period, awaiting the final debt, or the final direction on the capital improvement program. We re-initiated the project with Blackwater following the approval of the capital improvement program. The priorities in the capital improvement program are slightly different than the priorities that were originally established in 2017 when Blackwater was, agreement was implemented. So the amendment here is, is a process, we're going through a process to re-establish priorities in terms of the product, the specific elements of the project that will be designed by Blackwater. We have, or, under this agreement, Blackwater will take all of the design elements up through preliminary design of all the improvements that are projected at the, at the water treatment plant. He will then, the firm will prepare an engineering report and submit that to the state for funding, as a funding application, in conjunction with a SEQA document to seek funding for all of the improvements that have been identified at the water treatment plant. And then we are at, we are adding additional services from Blackwater to, in line with the priorities that have been established under the capital improvement program. So this is an amendment that brings it up to date, brings the contract up to date, reestablishes priority, consistent with the capital improvement program, and provides us an opportunity, or provides an opportunity to seek funding for all of the improvements at the water treatment plant. There's no change in cost of this, in this agreement, but it's simply deferring certain items in favor of adding other items in the contract. Any questions?
This comes about as a result of the CIP?
It does.
Being specific with respect to project?
It does.
Okay.
Exactly. Exactly. As I say, in 2017, it was a different perspective when the, when the Blackwater was originally hired, retained by the city. So now we're, we're adjusting the contract so that it's in alignment with the, with the approved CIP.
Good.
I'm so sorry.
We'll take a break. Okay. We'll take a, what, two minute, five minute? We'll take a five minute break. Is there any other council questions or comments? Is there any public comment? Yep. Okay. Is there a motion on the table to approve the amendment number one to the agreement with Blackwater Consulting? So move. Are you done? Yep. I was just going to add CIP, but, but yeah. Okay, so move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All on favor?
Aye.
Five oh.
Item D, acceptance of recycled water improvement project, approval of a reimbursement agreement with Greenhorn Creek, Motherload Investors LLC in the amount of 52,000 to be paid over two-year period with an interest at 2.55% on any unpaid balance. An approval of the maintenance agreement for future repair and replacement of the recycled water delivery system. Melissa.
Perfect. I'd like to turn this item as well over Dave Richards, our city engineer. And we are happy to be wrapping up this project.
Mayor, City Council, there are, there are three items incorporated into the, into our staff report. Number one is the acceptance, we're recommending acceptance of the recycled water improvement project. It began in, in January of this year, and it was finally complete, accepted, tested in October of this year. And as I say, it meets the requirements of the, of the original contract documents. This project, just as a reminder, is in response to a possible administrative civil liability in 2010 by the State Water Resources Control Board, and then triggered even more so by notice of violation of a major spill, a break, a pipeline break. As I say, the work has, has been completed, and we're recommending acceptance of the project in that. Upon acceptance of the project, we will then submit a final report to the, to the Regional Water Quality Control Board to identifying resolution of all of the items that were, that were enumerated in their notice of violation. So that's part, part one of this, of our staff report, is recommending acceptance of the project. The second part is reimbursement agreements on, on two fronts with Greenhorn Creek. The first reimbursement agreement revolves around their specific contribution to this project that was recently completed. The project and the specific amount that was agreed upon with, with Greenhorn Creek, that information was, was developed based on the actual costs, or the actual bid results and the cost submitted by the contractor. There was work that was prepared at three sites as part of this project, at the wastewater treatment plant, at Holman Reservoir, and at Greenhorn Creek. And so the break, the cost breakdown submitted by the contractor was then used to identify which portion would go with Greenhorn Creek, or would specifically be assigned to Greenhorn Creek with the balance to the city. And so there was a process that we went through, and it was very clear which, which parts of the construction were bent specifically benefiting Greenhorn Creek, which parks were parts where there was a shared benefit. And that was the basis, the rationale for ultimately arriving at the $52,000 for their portion of the, of the project. And so there's a reimbursement agreement that, one of the reimbursements agreements here in our, in our staff report, excuse me, revolves around that, that reimbursement agreement for the specific, for the specific improvements that, that we're recommending acceptance. So that's the first reimbursement agreement. The second reimbursement agreement goes, actually traces back to one of the requirements or one of the comments that was made in, that were made in the notice of violation that prompted the recycled water improvement project. There is concern expressed by the regional board about, is there a process in place to finance, to fund any future repairs or improvements to the recycled water system? And so that's the basis for the second reimbursement agreement, is to set up a mechanism, establish a mechanism for going forward. If there are issues related to the repair and replacement of specific elements of the recycled water system that benefit Greenhorn Creek, that we have a mechanism in place for, for that, for, for that reimbursement, for that funding. And again, that's a, that's an item that we will include in our final report to the regional board, in that we are setting up a mechanism for future, future repair and place, funding of future repair and replacement of the recycled water system. Are there any questions?
Does that mean we're setting money aside for it? Or does that mean at some future event, the cost will be established and half is theirs and half is ours?
Both.
Okay.
Both. The idea is in the, in the reimbursement agreement, and it's at the beginning of the year, that as part of the budgeting process, or as part of the budgeting process, we establish how many dollars we think that we will need to spend on repair and replacement for that element of the recycled water system. We then alert Greenhorn Creek as to this is what we anticipate spending, and then we have a mechanism if we spend those dollars for reimbursement by Greenhorn Creek.
Okay.
So we give them, we give them an opportunity to see the doll, to see the budget for potential repairs. We document the cost for those, those repairs, and that becomes the basis for the reimbursement.
Follow-up to that. Is there, is there an obligation on their part to take the Title 22 water? Is there a mandate? Is there a regulation?
There's no mandate for them to take the Title 22 water, but there's, it's in their interest to take the water, and frankly, it's in our interest to deliver the water to them because our spray field does not have capacity for, to take all of the water that we produce at the, at the wastewater plant. So there's a, it's a, it's a mutual benefit that we're delivering Title 22 water to Greenhorn Creek.
And is there a revenue issue for us on that? Are they paying for that, or is it?
There is a payment for the, for that, for the recycled water tracks back to a memorandum of understanding, I think almost to 2005. And it was a flat rate that was established at that point. And I want to, I want to say $20,000 a year or something on that order. There's a specific number that, that was agreed upon 15 years ago.
Is that linked to a certain acre-foot delivery, or is it, do you know anything about that?
No, there is, there isn't a limit. It's just, this is the, this is the amount.
And it's not metered? You just turn it on?
Well, it is now.
It is now? This new skating system, we know which side of the pipe is leaking if we have to know, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Not only do we know, not only do we know, but we're alerted to the fact.
And one final question. Has the state been kept abreast of our progress on this, or are they just been sort of bring-up file for 2021 or something? How's that gone because of this 125,000 that's hanging out there?
We have, we have been, we submitted a, a status report earlier this year to the regulatory folks at the regional board. And so they, they are, they are well aware of where we were on the project and when we were intending to finish. And so as part of that status report that we submitted, we essentially went through again the conditions that were identified in their NOV, and explained to them how we were meeting those conditions.
You mentioned, I think I remember we saw that, didn't we?
It's, it's time just to tell them, we're done. And by the way, we've got a mechanism now to fund any future repair and replacement.
Good.
Thank you. Any other council questions?
Thank you. Any other council questions?
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other council questions? Any public questions? Comments? Okay. Bring it back to council. Is there a motion to approve the reimbursement agreement between Greenhorn Creek, Motherlode Investors, in the amount of $52,000 to be paid over two years?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is item H, which is ratification of the interim appointment of Dave Porvat to the position of Public Works Foreman effective November 15th, 2019. Melissa.
Staff recommends approval of this item. Dave has agreed to serve in the capacity of the interim director, I'm sorry, the interim Public Works Foreman, and we are working on a term sheet for his review and clarification. We request your ratification of his appointment to this position.
And to clarify, this is the action out from closed session tonight. So, is there any public, any council comments?
None whatsoever.
Any public comments? With that, is there a motion to approve the ratification?
So moved.
Oh. First.
Whatever.
Second.
Sure.
Fine. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five-oh. Next on the agenda is approval of Resolution 1953, adding a stop sign for southbound Mark Twain Road at the intersection of, or with Pacific Avenue, removing the stop sign at eastbound Pacific Avenue at Gold Cliff Road, and adding a yield at northbound Gold Cliff. Rebecca.
All right. Make this work. Do I need to turn this on? There we go. Okay. Mayor, council, thank you very much. Um, you know, last time I gave you guys the staff report, my boss was observing this, and his advice to me the next day was not to admit criminal activities. So I will try to not repeat that mistake. All right, so, um, in the three months that I've been here, I've been called to complaints at this intersection two times. So there are definitely residents that are not, are concerned about it. So here's a, a large view. You can see Mark Twain Elementary School off to one side and Highway 49, just to give you a sense of where it's at. This is a little bit closer. The one thing I wanted you to see on this exhibit is the angle that these two roads come into Mark Twain, the Pacific Avenue, and Gold Cliff, hit it roughly at about 45-degree angle. So when you're driving on either of those roads, you believe you have the right of way. It's, it's not very clear which road is the dominant road. So it's a pretty late intersection, which is pretty confusing, or can be confusing, although it's, it's worked pretty well for quite a while. So the big issue that I noticed when we first showed up is the vegetation that is growing out into the intersection. This is a view standing pretty close to the stop bar on Pacific, looking north on Mark Twain. And now this is a view standing on Pacific. You can see this very deep ditch there, and you can't not, you cannot see around the corner to Mark Twain at all. This car is stopped at the one stop sign on the intersection. So this is our dedicated city planner, who you can hardly see. She's on the backside of this bush, and if there was somebody coming down Mark Twain, making a right-hand turn onto Pacific, you wouldn't see her until the last second. And this is a view where I'm standing at the stop bar. Mark Twain is behind me, and I'm looking up the street, up at Pacific, and Gold Cliff is to the left. So interestingly, I found this on Google Street View. This is a photo from 2012, and you can see that there is a yield sign on Pacific indicating that drivers are to yield to traffic coming in off of Gold Cliff. Today, that is a stop sign. So at some point between 2012 and now, it got converted. There is still no, this is on Gold Cliff, looking at the intersection. The stop sign for Pacific is just to the left of the photo. There's no regulatory sign for Gold Cliff. Gold Cliff drivers just get to go. All right, so this is the exhibit that I included in with your staff reports. And I have a few extra copies here, if you wanted a better version. And we'll zoom in on the important part. All right. So the issues at this intersection, obviously, it's that large juniper bush that's growing at 805 Pacific. And we, city public works crews have gone out there, they trimmed a portion of it, not enough of it, so they're going to go out again, I believe it's next week, to do the area that we've highlighted in pink. You can see where I've proposed a stop bar. Even a vehicle stopped at that stop bar still will not have a line of sight to a pedestrian that is at the second driveway. So no matter what we do with this vegetation, unless you completely purchase the property, take all the vegetation out, you might be able to see through this intersection. So looking at it, the stop sign on the top by the pink meets stop sign warrants. There are specific rules for when you can and cannot install stop signs. So that one meets warrants. Because there is one right now where Pacific or Gold Cliff, whichever one it is, comes into Mark Twain, because that stop sign is there, we now have a two-stop sign intersection, and we need to do an always stop. So I agree that the stop sign on Mark Twain headed northbound has not a lot of safety need for that stop sign. It would be inappropriate to have two of the three stop signs. You could potentially have one of the drivers on another leg, assuming that the Mark Twain traffic northbound would stop, and then you could have a collision with that. So the stop sign that I've circled in blue on Pacific, where there is currently a stop sign, is not actually a warranted stop sign. It doesn't meet any of the rules for stop sign installation. And then there is nothing on Gold Cliff for regulatory signs. So we've noticed, standing on the field a couple of times, that traffic that is headed southbound on Mark Twain, if they want to go to Gold Cliff, they will drive straight into oncoming, the oncoming traveling, and eventually get over to the correct side of the road. So if there's a regulatory sign to be located either on Pacific or on Gold Cliff, my suggestion is to put it on Gold Cliff, because then you can put down the stop bar or the shark teeth for a yield sign, and that would give a driver an indication that this is one lane, and this is your lane. So the pavement markings will help to delineate this intersection. So the yellow and the stop bars will help give drivers some better instructions as to where they're supposed to drive. So I believe that is it for the proposal. Do you guys have any questions?
So you're adding two stop signs on Mark Twain?
Yes.
Yep.
And then we'll be adding the yield sign on Gold Cliff.
And you're going to remove the one from up higher on Pacific, where you can't see anything around the bush anyways?
Uh, yeah, the one that's circled in blue, that would get removed, yes.
And regarding the vegetation removal, have you talked to the owners of that property? Is that something that is city's responsibility or their responsibility?
Uh, well, it's both. So there's a power pole right about here, and power poles will hopefully be installed in the public driveway. So the city, oh, a large chunk of that paint area, they might cut beyond the power pole and go into the private property a little bit. So when we, the first time I went out, it was one of the first intersections I'd seen in the city, one of the first complaints I'd received. When we went out again on Thursday, we knocked on her door to try and get a hold of the resident, and we weren't able to see her. I'll be out again tomorrow and Thursday, and I'll do my best to get a hold of her and talk to her about this. From what I've heard from the neighbors, she allows students, or just anybody, to walk through her driveway, because she knows how unsafe it is to walk around that corner.
Right.
Um, so she seems to be pretty agreeable to working out a solution here. But I understand, I mean, the bush obviously blocks noise and light and chaos from the intersection, so.
Right, right.
Which way is the school in this picture?
Uh, the school is to the left, up Pacific Street.
And I'm guessing that this traffic issue gets generated at pickup and drop-off time more than others?
It could be. I suspect that there's been a larger traffic volume on Mark Train, Mark Twain, because of the signal that's going in at Stanislaus. So we've had a lot of complaints recently, and I suspect it's because of that extra traffic.
I live in that area, and I always take Mark Twain because of Stanislaus.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what's going to happen, yeah.
Yeah.
Not so much with the school, it's just traffic is diverting to avoid the stop, when it comes to stop sign, too. Plus, you can turn from Mark Twain onto the road without getting hit much more easily and quick, more quickly than Stanislaus. So that tends to be used more.
I don't know, I like this. I mean, I walked the same path home from school when I went to Mark Twain, and people would fly up and down the road, well, 20-something years ago, a while ago.
But not today, because we don't admit to that.
No. Exactly. We don't admit to those type of things. I think slowing people down here is a great thing for the safety of the kids in and out of school time, and for people pulling out of the Pacific and Cliff, or Gold Cliff. It's a mess kind of right here.
It is.
And I think this kind of cleans it up a little bit, and gives it a true yield to Gold Cliff and a three-way stop there. And with the stoplight going in, who knows what traffic's going to do? And I think this will help that, too.
Probably.
The good news is the city already has the funding authorized to do the striping portion of this project, and we're about to get the sign funding authorized for all the sign replacements citywide. So the money is surprisingly available to actually make something happen quickly here, which is nice.
Well, I always thought it was very strange, Pacific and Gold Cliff. I live on Gold Cliff.
I do.
But, yeah, I always, I would go, gee, that's very peculiar, as I, when I first moved here. So I think this is a better fix.
It's worked for a long time, mostly because you have such great side distance between the two roads. You can see if anybody's coming, use your common sense.
Yeah.
All right.
Makes sense.
Any other comment before open? Okay. Public comment? Is there a public comment?
Hello, I'm Rosalie Hayes. I live right in this intersection. Our house is right underneath that yellow rectangle, so I'm very familiar with this. I watch the problems every single, every single day out there, and I just really, I'm impressed with the presentation. Thank you so much. This is really important to my neighbors, and I'm kind of embarrassed that we didn't complain sooner, because you said you've only had two complaints, but, um, you know, we, I've seen two kids get hit on bikes right there, and we've had three dogs get hit, so this has been ongoing for a long time. So anyway, thank you for doing this, everybody. We really appreciate it in the neighborhood. All the stop signs are great. We like the removal of the one that's there now and adding the yield. I think these are all great ideas, and please approve it. One last suggestion that I, oh, I have two suggestions. One is possibly an additional speed bump, if possible. You can't see it on this map, but further down Mark Twain, it's a pretty long straight stretch, and, I'm sorry, I'm talking really fast. And that is where, in my experience, most of the speeders in the neighborhood are coming from that direction, and they're heading very quickly down to the highway. I could give you their cars, their names, their license plate. I know who they are. They, they almost hit us like every day when we pull out of our driveway. So anyway, most of the speeding comes from that direction. So in addition to this, maybe a, a speed bump down there would be helpful as well to kind of prepare them for the upcoming stop, is one suggestion. And then the other one is, I don't know if anybody, and I could probably do it myself, but has contacted the school administration about this. I don't know if that would be a benefit to everybody, because so many people are doing the drop-off pickup every day, and maybe just a reminder to the parents in a school newsletter, or, I mean, I don't know how they announce things to parents, but maybe just let Mark Twain know, the school know what we're dealing with as well, and like just spread the word around, I guess. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Thomas Hayes. I live at 775 Mark Twain Road, same place as Rosalie. At first, I appreciate all the staff's effort in drawing up this plan, because, yeah, it is a problem intersection. For me, my main motivation with this project is the speeding. People fly up and down this road on Mark Twain, like, I mean, I think people hit 55 every once in a while. So the stop signs will help that. I think one issue, maybe some repercussions from this, is during our commute times, both in the morning and the evening, and when it coincides with the start and letting out of school, we, we may see some backups, especially going to school on the, it would be northbound or southbound, right by the bushes. I could see that line becoming quite long, which would end up maybe blocking a few driveways, because of our driveways all along that, and it may be long on the other side as well. So my ideal plan, because what I would want to accomplish here is to both make that intersection safer, and I think removal of bushes would go a long way to do that, but also I want to slow people down, and I know the stop signs would do that. But speed bumps was my ideal plan the whole time, maybe get one on the northbound and southbound of Mark Twain, and clean up the bushes. Thank you.
I'm Ray Sincere. I live at, right next to Tommy and Rosalie, and my daughter lives right next door to there. I live at 787. And I appreciate everything you've done, but it hasn't worked for 32 years. I'm going to tell you that, for a fact. Almost every day of my life, I'm out there yelling at people to slow down. So it doesn't work, and hasn't worked. And previously, I have called the city engineers, and Mr. Myers didn't believe in stop signs. I guess he believed in dead kids, but he didn't believe in stop signs. Here's, here's the rub. There is a number of factors that go into this, but like Tommy said, speeding is the biggest factor. That's number one. Number two is it uses a thoroughfare now, because of all the backup on Stanislaus. And when this light goes in, it's going to be worse. So I know that speed bumps are more expensive. I'm all for the stop signs. I don't want people stopping in front of my house, but I've got five grandkids, three in my house and next door, and kids next, in the low-rent housing down the street. There's kids all over the place, kids walking down, and people don't give a rat's about it. And the worst times are just before school, and then when they come out to go to work, when the moms and dads are dropping them off, it's bad. And then in the evening, and then people coming home from work. But it's speeding. You live there, you live down there, you know what it's like. I've got neighbors on, down on, on Crystal. It, it's the same thing, and they use it as a thoroughfare now. So, you know, in, in the intelligence of Caltrans, they, they didn't take that into account, the dropping off of school. So not only the stop signs, and I appreciate everything you've ever done, but slowing people down, and the speed bumps would help with that. So, and like I said, I know there's an expense to that, but I've seen kids hit, dogs, I've had buses end up because of speeding traffic, end up almost into my head just because trying to avoid people. So over the, the last 32 years, there, there's been more than one incident, and it happens all the time. So you need to do something about it, which it seems like you are, but like Tommy said, the speed bumps should be there, too. We should be more concerned about the kids around there than the expense. I would hope we would, if you, any of you have kids or grandkids. Thank you.
Any other?
Hi, I'm Lily Burns, and I am neighbors. I live on Crystal Street, which, which intersects with Mark Twain. And my husband and I, we walk, we take our dogs for a walk every single evening around 5:00 or so, and we make a loop around Mark Twain and Pacific and Gold Cliff and all that. And there's not-
to the next door to, to the jewelry store. So anyway, so, yeah, a lot of good things are happening, so think about Christmas, think about gifts, go downtown, on the November thirtieth with the parade and all. There's gonna be a sneak peek of the hotel, we hope. I mean, they, you know, that's what I've heard, that you could go in and go down and see it. So if you're curious, and you wanna see the bar at the hotel, then it's supposed to be open. Okay? All right. Let me think of anything else. No, just, that's the only two things I've been involved in, this, I haven't had the other meetings this month yet.
Oh, sorry, but.
No, you're fine.
I apologize. Halloween was fun. And it, we had a great turnout. [inaudible]
Hi, I'm Lily Burns and I am neighbors. I live on Crystal Street, which intersects with Mark Twain. And my husband and I, we walk, we take our dogs for a walk every single evening around five or so. And we make a loop around Mark Twain and Pacific and Gold Cliff and all that. And there's not one day that we do not have to move over because of speeders. And it's scary. And even on Crystal Street, I mean, people are using that as a thoroughfare to get to Mark Twain. And I think it's going to get worse where they put those stoplights in. But I agree with everybody here that speed bumps for sure would, would make a huge difference and, and the stop signs. But I think speed bumps, they're just going to slow people down. And, you know, there's no one there patrolling the stop signs. So I'm kind of thinking, they're going to work, but sometimes people are just going to probably go through the stop signs because there's nobody there patrolling. I agree with everybody here, the kids, people walking their pets, kids playing, it's just, it's not safe. And, yeah, so that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Allison Serre. I'm Mary DeRae. We live right there where the stop sign is on Mark Twain Road. And I do also appreciate everybody's efforts in this. I really have felt heard in the last few months about this. Ray and I've complained about it for years and it's gone nowhere. And I, I, I agree with everything that everybody's said here, but it is important that we have some presence, especially at school times, with the police department. Every once in a while, they'll be there, they'll be there for a few days and everybody slows down a little bit, and then they, and then they're not there, and they speed back up again. And it's not just morning, it's afternoon. It may be worse in the afternoon, that the kids are wandering, they're walking home from school and cars. It's unbelievable to me how little they pay attention to kids walking in the street. They just don't think. They're just flying down the road and Ray and I are constantly yelling. So that'll help. If, if we have presence there, you won't hear me yelling quite so much. It's, it's, it's so scary. One day, there was a kid, like a high school kid or in his twenties, I yelled at him to slow down and it, it took him from my house all the way down to, to Coles before he could even slow down. So, speed is the key. We've got to control the speed. They'll, I've watched them, I mean, my kitchen window is right in front of the stop sign and I've watched people just slide by. I watched, a traffic accident the other day, lady didn't stop and she ran into somebody. So, the stop signs are great, but we need the police presence as well. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, bring it back to council. I have a couple of questions. With the striping, are the striping going to go back further along Mark Twain towards, towards Crystal? Because, like them, I have similar stories and just recently getting driven off the road because there's no difference on whether it's the left or the right side. And so the cars are taking the majority of the lane, which then pushes you, unless you're in a large vehicle, you either end up in somebody's yard or in the field or hitting a car, which has, all of those have personally happened to me. And I know each one of those individuals out there have had similar experiences. So, I feel also, if, it's not only just speed, it's where are you supposed to be on the road? So if we're going to have, if there is funding available, is it going to allow for the striping down? Because it used to be there. I mean, but it just won itself out like everywhere else in the city.
Yeah, I noticed Pacific used to have a centerline stripe and there's the, a ghost of a stripe still on the streets. So the streets that will get striping refreshed has not been, that list has not been created yet. So we can certainly add a longer run on Mark Twain and figure out what that is. And we'll, we'll bring that back to council for you guys to take a look at that and approve the locations.
Okay.
But we can use the funding that's already been approved to do this intersection as well as in front of the high school, which needs to be refreshed very badly. So those two will go as a separate project if this is approved.
And we do have the larger project, as Rebecca is, but that will take some more time to identify the scope of that much larger project, which will include the roads that you identified. We are just responding to immediate council and community concern about the striping in front of the high school and this location specifically. And given the safety concerns expressed to us, we thought important to identify the scope, move it forward independent of the bigger project.
Given what I've heard about speed bumps tonight, is it just curious about why that wasn't mentioned in this? Is it just?
Well, speed bumps, because this is such a safety issue with the sight distance, it needs stop sign warrants. And so we stopped at that. If it hadn't met stop sign warrants, we would have investigated other traffic calming methods. You're not supposed to use stop signs as a traffic calming, they do have that effect. But just because of the sight distance issues, absolutely needs a stop sign. But Melissa and I were talking about that earlier, you know, everybody has a speeding problem on their street. I have it on my street at home. So, we should develop a city standard for when speed bumps, when, not a speed bump warrant, but when it would be, when we should be looking at installing speed bumps and creating criteria so that we don't just put speed bumps on every street that people think other people are going to pass on. So that's something that Melissa and I can work on.
So, I have a question.
Yeah.
And I, I've heard the public comment in regards to slowing the traffic down. And I understand that stop signs will slow the traffic down. And I also understand that there will be people that slide through those stop signs and people that just blow through them completely because they don't care. And I, I have a personal issue in my neighborhood too, so I understand that. And I've brought it to the city. There's also an alternative to the traditional speed bumps. I've seen the very graduated, almost like a three level, yeah, and they're wider. I've also seen the dots, you know, a grid of the dots. And I have been told about the concern of those making sounds, that neighbors can hear the sounds. But it also, I don't know how loud that is or, or how you do a study on that. So, when will we be able to see, okay, we, we do the stop signs, these people are dealing with this every day, obviously these kids are dealing with this every day. My, my concern is children. I mean, I like you, but, you know, you're not a kid anymore. But it's a great concern to me. So how quickly, you know, once we do a stop sign, if we approve this and then everybody gets used to the stop signs and it's like, okay, well, I can kind of blow through them and we're right back to a real serious issue, how quickly can we get on something that actually physically slows cars down?
Take it one step at a time maybe.
And that's why.
I think it's a great concern throughout the city and there are some very specific places.
So when I, for us as staff, the immediate concern presented to us was the concern about the students walking from the apartment complex in various areas within the community, getting stuck in that purple area and not viewable from cars making that right-hand turn. We spent a couple afternoons at various times at that intersection observing that. And so that became the immediate need, the immediate complaint that we're responding to.
And I think that is good.
Yes. And we have the opportunity with the funding, we've already got the immediate student need at Bret Hart High School on Murphy's Grade Road. So this is a perfect opportunity to deliver this quickly. I think the next priority for us then becomes the sign and the striping project that we already have on the books. With that, council can direct us to explore what we need to identify a criteria for speed bumps. Because I think everybody has the example, well, in my neighborhood, I think. And so then, you know, when we talk to fire, when we've got speed bumps on every local road through town, you know, what's fire's perspective going to be on that? It needs to be kind of a collaborative discussion where we identify those locations on a case-by-case basis. So we can work on that, but I wouldn't anticipate a speed bump being installed this fiscal year.
Right. Okay.
I think that this is what we could do most immediately to respond to the concerns about students getting trapped on that curve. I think all three of us stood on that curve and we could hear cars coming from all directions and we couldn't see them at all. And we're adults. So, and as Rebecca mentioned, that intersection, because of that sight distance warrants the stop sign. And I think from an engineering perspective, it wasn't felt that speed bumps would protect students on that intersection as these improvements would. So I think with, with that, I would like to move forward with this, move forward with Murphy's Grade Road, give us the direction to explore the ordinance, but keep the priority for signs and striping citywide. And then we can explore speed bumps potentially next fiscal year.
And do you have a timeline on how quickly this will happen?
We're jamming. We were trying, Rebecca's pushing hard. We're waiting for approval tonight and I know, do you even want to say when you thought?
Approximate. Ballpark. Not holding you to it.
Optimistically, I mean, I think we can, within a month, we can get this installed. I need to get two written quotes from two separate striping subs and we can move forward from this.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, one step at a time, see if, how this works. And, and again, the corner's one thing and then the stop signs are the other for slowing traffic, you know, in a sense. See how that works. I drive it every day back and forth. And, I mean, but almost every road, I live on Gold Cliff where, from Finnegan, where you come up the hill and then as you get over the top of the hill at 7:45, everybody's trying to get their children to Mark Twain. You know, so I don't walk my dog on the street. I go down Moxie, which is a gravel road, because that again too is, but I think probably every road, we can have that complaint. And I don't know if we could do a little education for our public for, you know, to, at some point, it would be good to say, hey, you know, because I go like, I'm walking up to my house and somebody speeds by and I go like this. I go, I go like that, but they're probably going to get mad at me. I go, no, don't do that.
I had heard of somebody once that took a hairdryer and went out and stood on the street and pretended that they were radar.
Well, I wasn't, no, I wasn't trying to shoot her, I would just go, I'd go like this, I'm not doing anything strange.
Well, just put drones up in the air and pretend.
But they get a hairdryer and make people think they're back. They might get mad at me, but I just automatically go, ah, you know, like, no, you're going to kill my dog.
And we do get a number of speed complaints. So we've had the speed complaints on, in Greenhorn Creek. We've had the speed complaints on Angels Oaks Drive. We've had the speed complaints on Mark Twain. We've had them on Gold Cliff, Stockton Road. And so that's why we can't just put down a speed bump without first identifying what the criteria is involved PD and involved fire and engineering in that discussion. Because we could find ourselves with a lot of speed bumps.
Right.
Throughout local roads and we really need to be.
And there's variations. I think there's a lot of different variations to slow traffic down that we need to explore.
The speed bumps can ruin your car sometimes. You have to be really careful to get the right ones, you know.
Well, and I think that also the biggest thing as we go forward to is the circulation. We've kind of locked ourselves in from going from one neighborhood to another and so it's impacting all the local roads and we don't have a solution because there's just no alternative. So, I see that's, you know, it's just going to be one step at a time.
Right.
Going through as we try and resolve this. Because being landlocked with a downturned road, we don't have, we're at the discussion unless we solve our local street problems with circulation around, around the city and start opening them up. So.
Yeah. Thank you.
But I saw somebody have his hand up, so I'm just going to.
You have to come up.
Twenty-five.
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 Do we have speed bumps that are opportune for use at that speed? My experience has been, speed bumps are typically more like fifteen mile per hour.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it can be.
And that's where I think it goes into what Melissa said earlier with the funding that we have going.
Right.
We, the council has directed staff to start looking into some of that. So, we'll, we'll find out if it, you know.
This is the start of a good thing, I think.
Doesn't affect me, I have a one-way look, you might.
So with that, if there's no further council comment or public comment, I'm going to bring it back for a motion to approve.
So approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five-oh. Thank you, guys. Next on the, next on the agenda is a consolidated staff report. Is there any? Do you guys want to, we'll take a break. You guys can leave.
Oh, you're leaving at the good part?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Good night, guys.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
You can just feel it fidgeting back there.
Well, I kind of was waiting for them to come in and I was like, okay, I guess just stand for the hour.
Stay for it all.
Good night, yo.
Good night. Thanks for coming. You're welcome.
Good night.
See you, Rosy.
Good night.
Okay, consolidated staff report. We have a consolidated report from staff. Is there any council question on the staff report?
Only that I appreciate the detail that's provided in here.
Yeah.
It's really a good little update on everything that's going on. And it's impressive when you see it, line after line after line of things that are being done, so.
It's a good update. I like it too.
Yes.
It's really helpful.
And then just for an update, I was able to confirm with legal counsel that no crimes were committed in allowing someone to phone in to public comment. Because, so we have confirmation, no problem.
All right.
Yay.
They're legal, yes.
I do have one question on this. Is the opening date really one, one-twenty for the hotel?
Don't make me talk.
I've been telling people, oh, it's going to happen in December. I've been saying, this is December, I go, oh, my gosh.
Well, they've been doing a lot of work and it's been a big improvement. Yeah. And from what, yeah. I guess not, don't drink shit anymore.
Yeah.
They're working though.
Okay, if there is no public comment on consolidated staff report, I'll move on to council report and I'll move on to my last with council member, Mehtoey.
Well, on the note of the hotel, the Yurica, I got a sneak peek downstairs and I will say it is spectacular. The work that's been done to modernize it is beautiful and the preservation and the respect of the history of it is just beyond compare. And there are these little details that I think could be missed, but it's something that needs to be promoted. And I was talking with Mary Ann and telling her, you've really got to let people know about this, this and this. She, she really did put a lot of effort into it. Went to the late night downtown on Saturday and it was nice to see a lot of people all over the place. One of the little shops I went into, she said, I've been wiped out, which was a good thing. So people were out shopping and eating and enjoying the evening and it's really encouraging. And I could hear people saying, are they doing this every month? Wow. I mean, yes, that's, that's wonderful. Please support downtown. Everybody complained that nothing's happening in Angels Camp. Well, guess what? Now there's a lot happening in Angels Camp. So shop local. So that's exciting. And I just hope that everyone has a good time for the parade coming up and a very happy Thanksgiving.
Let's see, I, I went to Mingos on Main Street and got a blouse for the, something for, before Christmas and went to the gift shops. And so, again, I just confirm, yes, it's a good place to go shopping. They get, there's a couple gift shops now on top of it. Talked to some ladies yesterday, they got all excited. We were talking them into going to the next door to, to the jewelry store. So anyway, so, yeah, a lot of good things are happening. So think about Christmas, think about gifts, go downtown on the November 30th with the parade and all. There's going to be a sneak peek of the hotel, we hope. I mean, they, you know, that's what I've heard, that you could go in and go down and see it. So if you're curious and you want to see the bar at the hotel, then it's supposed to be open. Okay. It's very, all right. Let me think of anything else. No, just, that's the only two things I've been involved in this, I haven't had the other meetings this month yet.
Oh, sorry. But I apologize. Halloween was fun. And it, we had a great turnout in our neighborhood, which I really like, that Angels Camp is drawing in a lot of kids. And, I mean, we're, we've, obviously we've been talking about kids tonight. And our police were down around and about and the kids were all thrilled and delighted to see them and, and talk with them and, turn your lights on. So that again, it's, people are starting to learn that, you know, oh, Angels Camp is a place to come and a, a place for families and kids. And so, that was nice too. Just so you know.
Well done to Chief Ellis. I here understand you were a big hit at the library thing, reading stories to the kids and showing the dog in the truck. That went over really good. Nice job. You slid right in there like you did all your life. Alvin and I were at LAFCO last night. General Business was, we approved MSR and the sphere of influence for the CPUD. Notice, of interest, I think, to this group is that there seems to be some interest in scheduling an MSR and an SOI for Angels Camp. It's been over five years. So, just FYI, I think it's possible 2021 that might come about. More likely, it's 2122. But they're looking at it. Couple people have expressed interest in doing it. CPPA met on the 16th of October. We accepted the annual audit, financial statements, general improvement in the overall reserve picture there, so that was good news. We approved any energy, energy efficient, efficient grants to CPUD in Calvers County for projects within agency guidelines. That group meets again in January on the 15th. And then Economic Development meets the 21st, it's Thursday, albeit that. And UWPA, I don't know what you said last time, because I wasn't here the 5th, but, or you, did you go to the?
No, I did not.
Approved a contract extension for the consulting engineer.
No.
Okay. And we had a day on safety review, complete compliance issues were minimal. Steve's already got responses to that going. We got a new power contract with the potential for 130,000 in revenue. And additional revenue. Attended, I attended a board training that was kind of set up through UWPA, but presented by Joint Powers Insurance Authority. And that was pretty interesting. That group meets again on the 16th of December, tentatively. And that's it for me.
I too attended LAFCO, but you hit all the nails on the head on that one, I think. We did procedure stuff and sphere of influence stuff. What else? I did not go to the Angels Night Out. I was in Reno, but I heard very good things about it and it was a hit. And the parade is coming up at the end of the month. And everybody come downtown and have a good time.
That's okay.
That's all I got.
I attended the Mountain Water County Social with Joe. I did not attend the tour. Steve was on the tour. And the Mountain Counties, Mountain Water Counties, they decided to do the meeting, is it this quarter or here in this area to look at all the watershed? And so they did a tour of McKay's and all the different, the Flume, three-quarter mile. And then afterwards, all of the members of the Mountain Water Counties attended, joined up at Murphy's Hotel. And they did a really good speech and presentation and talked about the work at the state level with Aqua and various partnerships with the watershed in this, just in Northern California, in the rural, rural areas. It's a UWPA, the city is part of that through UWPA and were members of that, of that group. I too attended Angels Night Out and it was really well received. I heard a lot of compliments from businesses and visitors alike. There were a lot of new faces I didn't see, so that was really good. To see people heading out. And then I heard with the Crafty Chicks show all day, that it was non-stop festivals through town. So, and with the amount of colors, I believe it, it was pretty busy that day. So it's good to see, had those coordinated.
Yes.
At the same, same time.
And they promoted downtown, so. They really did, yeah.
Yeah. So Julie, she's with Veronica and I were talking about it. So she's really done a great job to bring in, bring in people down to Angels. And with that, our calendar, Susan.
Before I read the calendar, I'd like to let you know that I got an email from Stephen Qualls. He's with the League of California Cities. And they are looking for people who would like to be appointed to committees that shape the position that the league takes on politics and legislation that's coming up. So if you are interested in that, I would gladly forward you the information that he's applied.
And that, thank you for bringing that up. I just got reappointed to environmental quality.
At League of Cities? At League of Cities? Congratulations.
Thanks. But if you guys are interested, they need more rural voices. It's very lonely when you're sitting with Santa Monica and Beverly Hills at the table.
Angels Camp?
Yeah, pretty much. I think I'm the only rural city on, on this board. There isn't any other rural cities unless somebody got appointed this, this year that I don't know about. But it's, they have all kinds of different boards. There's all, there's public safety, there's transportation, so if you guys are interested, check it out.
And for policy committees, he says they have seven of those. Lots of opportunities. Okay, calendar. Tomorrow at 9:00 AM is IRWMA at the PUD offices. Then Thursday, the 21st, at 8:30 is the DAC Board of Directors. Also, the museum commission meets at 8:30 Thursday. And then at 9:30, CSPDD meets. The 26th, that's Tuesday, at 5:30, UWPA meets. And then city offices are closed for Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving on the 28th and 29th. And we meet back here again on December 3rd for city council.
I don't think that UWPA thing is correct, but we're thinking the 16th of December is a tentative date with the November date being canceled.
It's canceled for sure in November?
Mm-hmm.
And you'll have it on December 16?
We think.
Okay. Thank you.
For the parade, has the rest of council been contacted about being in the parade?
Uh-uh. Okay. Might seem invitey. Yeah. Just to head up, just to let everybody know that it might be, I know you're going to be.
I think I'm already somewhere else.
You're somewhere else. So I think it's just going to be the three of us.
Is it Saturday, the 30th?
Yeah, Saturday.
Sitting in a truck or something?
I don't know, Nate.
Might have to walk.
Yeah, I don't know. But I'm.
They have plans for you.
We go with Santa.
They do have plans for you, so. Call will be forthcoming.
Great.
Thank you for letting me add that. And with that, I have the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
A lot of business there.